I know, I'm gonna fix it.
All right, very good, okay.
All right, we think we might have solved the issue. Can everybody hear us?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
We're gonna try to work through it here and see if it gets us on. We're actually on the owl. What do you need to control?
Nothing, I just want to make sure it's where it's supposed to be.
I think we're on. Let's see what camera. No, we're on the other camera, which is fine.
No, I know.
All right, bear with us here, we're still trying to get us on the owl.
Okay, from an owl. Okay, there we go. I will, I will fix that.
I actually like the other one. All right, hang on a second. All right, better late than never. All right, let's see, we're not missing anybody, we've got you all here. And so I'm going to start up the Board of Commissioners work session, virtual meeting, November 23, 2024, 30 p.m. So can I have a motion to open this meeting, please?
So moved.
We can do this by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody opposed, we're on. All right, first matter of business, Ms. Dina is up to bat there. So one more time, Dina, it's your show.
Hello, all. Well, I am so excited to be here with y'all tonight. And John is with me too, from Benish, to walk you through our next steps of our update to our downtown plan, park plan. So what we're gonna do tonight is basically walk you through some history. Then we're gonna go through some concepts. And then we're gonna go through some imagination boards, kind of get your imagination going, to see what you like and dislike. This is a very important meeting for us to get input from y'all. And the reason why is because it's a critical piece in the timeline to get your feedback. We would love your feedback anytime during the process, but this is, this is your time to kind of really tell us your thoughts and dreams of this space for our citizens. So this is our, helping us gather that information. And if we're going kind of fast, I might ask you to slow down so I can write more notes. Because it's, I take this to heart, what y'all like the look and feel of our new downtown park. So with that being said, we're gonna go through, this portion is like our phase one of the park plan. So we're mainly focusing on the Horton property area. And then we will bring back some information with phase two and phase three that would encompass the Barnes Park area and the Community Corner. So again, this is just the first phase of everything that we're going to go through right now. But this is the biggest portion of the update. So we thought that was the most important thing to go over with y'all tonight. So again, extremely excited. So John is gonna be walking you through a lot of the information. I'm gonna be taking notes. And I can answer questions as we go along as well, okay? Any questions to begin with? Good, all right, awesome. Okay, so I need to make sure that John can flip the pages to...
You can flip for me if you'd like, Dina, that's fine.
All right, awesome.
Or whoever's controlling, I'll let you know.
I can flip for you then. Hopefully, if I can find a little... This always gives me trouble, so bear with me for a minute. There we go.
There we go.
Awesome.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. It's good to see you all and a few of you, good to see you again. A few of you came out Saturday morning on a nice day, Community Corner, to see what was going on with this, so glad you could participate. As Dina mentioned, you know, we've been very busy over the last, almost a month here. I guess it's been a month since we signed back on to take us through this master plan update. And quite a few things have happened. We've done a little site tour out on the Horton property. And we've been gathering a lot of information, a lot of discussion with other town departments on things that could happen in this area. But as Dina mentioned, you know, our image to the left shows our, what will ultimately be our full scope of this update. The Horton property, the David Barnes Park area, plus a couple of paper streets that we have in there right now. And then the Community Corner, and how we get folks sort of connected between all these two, three parcels. And there are some bike pit improvements that are gonna happen in the downtown area that we've added to our base, that'll get sort of folded in as well. Dina's also working with another consultant on some potential ideas for skate park expansion and improvements that we will fold into the David Barnes piece. But what we wanted to bring to you today, and what we've been focused on to get us through this first batch of public involvement, is the Horton property. That's the area that's been designated as phase one in this master plan update. And that is the area that we will be chasing with some grant applications come 2021. So we're trying to check all the boxes in that process. So on this next slide, going the other way. So when this plan was first done, five, six years ago, there were a lot of elements that were thrown into the plan. And we've put a listing here on this slide of everything that was looked at or considered in many of the different schemes and the final plan that was finally adopted. So, you know, the community center was probably the biggest component of that, and probably the more expensive, the most expensive in all of those schemes. But there were a variety of other elements that we're trying to be folded into, not only the Horton property, but the David Barnes piece as well, and how to connect them all. So we've sort of started with this list of elements as we move into, trying to come up with a couple of concepts just to generate some dialogue and get some reaction. Not all of these elements, at this point in time, still make sense for these pieces. But with the addition of the Community Corner, there may be a few things now that can move up into that area. And we are starting to work on a little bit of a sketch design for Community Corner. It's focused on, you know, another, another event area, a little more formal, with some gardens, maybe some community gardens, some of the, you know, some of the water or fountain pieces to it. Art walks, working with Dina's committee now, that's starting to look at public art throughout downtown, and how we fold that into the plan. As you can see, and I don't know if everybody's been out to the Horton property, we threw a few images, then they're on the right. You know, we certainly have quite a bit of vegetation, trees, some topography to deal with, as you saw even on the, on the previous slide. So it's not your, not an easy park to come in and lay a lot of elements. We want to maintain the character. Certainly want to maintain as many of the trees as we can in this development. So a lot of our proposed development in the two schemes that are upcoming will focus more on some of the open area up by Givens. So if you want to flip to that slide, Dina. We prepared two very conceptual concepts for this property. So we started, the one on the left sort of takes into mind the last scheme that was in the master plan that's currently been adopted. And the second concept on the right, you know, starts to, you know, massage and do a few other things with the site, but keeping some of the similar components in there. We're pretty sure that we want to have an anchor in this site of some type of a multi-use pavilion. So not a community center that's all self-enclosed, that would be a recreation center. This would be more of a flex-type pavilion that could be rented out to, you know, one large group, multiple groups. It has the ability to be used for event space, could be part of a farmer's market on Saturdays. So a lot of, a lot of ability to, you know, keep it open, perhaps close pieces off in inclement weather. But really, the focus was more on a large shelter that is then supported with event space lawns. And we liked the idea of, if you remember the previous plan, there was a large, or the Lynn Street down there, where we show pedestrian connection, was shown in that plan as a road to connect Lynn Street on up through the park to Givens. And we like the idea of having a pedestrian access down there, at least to provide emergency access, but not to bring that road all the way through the park. But we like having the opportunity, having promenades. So we've shown in concept one, about, you know, 20-foot-wide promenade that once again can be flexed for food trucks, farmers markets, vendors during events. It's more of an oval loop over on the second scheme that actually we show some, you know, potential tents that could be set up around that. The scheme on the left probably has a lot more open space shown. So we've, you know, we've gotten into some tree removal. You know, a little, I guess, a little location on there. We do have a sewer line, sewer easement that comes through the property. And so we have to be mindful of that. And then we also have a stream channel over on the east side of the property that is, you know, basically the confluence of water that is coming down that paper street from downtown through David Barnes Children's Park, crosses under Givens, there's a big, a big, though it should be bigger, pipe under Givens. And then there's another pipe that's right where Givens becomes church. So that's all dumping in, and then it's, of course, coming out of this property as it flows down through the south and heads out, heads out towards the Rice property to point south. So we have that channel that we're keeping in our thoughts as we work through this. But we're showing a variety of trail systems, primarily through the woods. You know, these trail systems could have some picnic pods in them. Some could have shelters, some are more just tables, perhaps with a grill, a bench. Looking at some stormwater amenity areas where we can reroute some of this drainage through these areas. And make them part of the park, both on a educational side. But even as you can see in these, we even show some little, you know, could be some rocks coming through there, part of a trail that you actually walk through this amenity. We're showing playgrounds, and the intent on the playgrounds would be more of a interactive play for different age kids, different age groups, more of a natural-type play structure. So whether they're wood-like materials, you know, getting into some, some rock forms, having kids just get dirty and down and dirty and kind of learn about things, explore things, getting away a little bit from your typical, you know, bright red, yellow playground areas like you'd see at the schools. Something a little different, that's a little more, a little more natural, picking up the character of the site. You know, outdoor fitness cluster, particularly where we might have, have the ability to marry it up with a playground, so that the grandparents can come with the grandkids and the grandparents can use some of the exercise equipment while keeping an eye on the grandchildren. We show, so in the, in the scheme on the left, we pushed all the playground equipment over to the right of the promenade, so that it really does mix in with our green space, our stormwater amenity, some of our flowing natural-type gardens. Scheme number two on the right, we've used the playground in three locations, but the one at the bottom of the oval could be some type of a nice iconic playground piece to anchor that in with a, you know, a set of restrooms around it. We've got a stage and amphitheater shown in sort of two different vernaculars. One is more open lawn area. One, we've left the trees in there to frame. So could be looking at a couple of different type of intended, or attendance groups at each of those pavilions. There's a second set of restrooms that we show, you know, away from the pavilion area. And we separated the restrooms from the pavilion primarily so that if you are renting that pavilion out, you know, whoever's renting it doesn't basically dominate the restrooms. We've seen that happen, people rent shelters. Then they get very upset when people in the park are coming to use the restrooms and coming through their, their events. So we've separated them, that makes it a little easier for maintenance as well. We're showing a multi-use court in each of these. And these are not meant to be full-blown, like basketball courts. These would be flex courts. Might have a small wall around it, so you could, you could have a small half-basketball or little dodgeball area, so they can come in, they could do a little soccer practice, but not meant to be anything for a game or organized sport. The parking we show in both of these schemes, right now, we're showing about 120 spaces. This is about in the same location as the current plan, which still makes the most sense. It's, it's an area that's already pretty much cleared. The topography works a little better on these, or at least easier to grade. Gets us close to Givens and, and broad, so that we can, you know, get in and out of the park with a main access. And therefore, you know, once again, keeping the more open parts of the existing property to where we already want to have open space on it. With the Public Works Facility moving over to Waxall, Marvin, and Kensington, we will have, we would, this gives us a chance for Park and Rec still to keep a couple of buildings down there to use for not only maintenance for this park, but pieces, you know, on the south side of downtown. And then being able to connect it through the, to the park so that they can get in, not only with vehicles to stage the events at the amphitheater, but maintenance equipment. We could have some limited parking down there, we haven't looked into that yet in much detail. But over time, maybe as this park or this property evolves, with any potential additional expansion, be able to have another access at that point of the park. So we generated these two schemes, primarily just to get some reaction from, this is the third of three meetings that we've held in the last week. Wednesday night, we presented this to the Park and Cultural Recreation Advisory Committee. And then Saturday, we had a two-hour open house drop-in session at the Community Corner, just to get reaction from folks, not only on the plan, but elements in the plan options. So, you know, as we work on these over the next, next month, two months, as we get through mid-January, we start to fold in the connections back up to David Barnes. You know, a little more discussion with the town on what might happen on Given Street, because we'll have some infrastructure improvements that will need to take place up there, just to accommodate probably some on-street parking, safe crossings. If we're gonna go ahead and redo some things in the infrastructure, upsize the pipe that comes underneath Givens right now. Take advantage of that at the same time. And then as we work our way up Church Street, tying into the sidewalk project that will ultimately happen, probably before this construction goes in on the park. We're still working on how those, how those schedules might dovetail. So the next, the next slide that Dina's gonna pop up then was the, you know, some of the elements we put out, once again, to get reaction, see where people are thinking in terms of, you know, how things might look in the park, in terms of elements. And I think you all picked up some packages that had these three boards in them, as well as each of the two plans. We've asked everybody to look at each of the three sheets and try to narrow down to three items that they feel really speak to them. This is, this is in the direction of something I would like to see in the park. So on the left, we had a variety of different types of, you know, architecture elements for shelters, for, you know, trellises, amphitheater. There's also a bench swing, which isn't a building in there, but fit on that sheet. It still gives a little architectural element to potentially locate some bench swings around the park, which are popular right now. But so a variety of these of the architectural elements that are shown are in and around the Charlotte Mecklenburg area. You know, Freedom Park is the, is the one you see up there on the upper left, as they've gone to more of a craftsman style with a lot of their pavilions and shelters. Down on the bottom left is one of the large shelters over at Chestnut Park and Indian Trail. The one just above it is a multi-use shelter, though it doesn't have a lot of space underneath it. It's, it's actually in downtown Ashboro. And it, it flexes as their farmer's market on, on weekends, where they back up to all sides on that. Rankin Lake Park, which is right next to that on the upper right, so the next, next one up there, over in Gastonia, which is a large multipurpose shelter that faces out on the lake there. Some of you, if you've been to Squirrel Lake Park and Matthews, right above it is a small, single-seating shelter. And so the rest, rest of these images are ones we've gotten from architects we've worked with. They've been pulled out of a couple of different catalogs as well. So there's amazing things you can do now with even off-the-shelf shelters in terms of customizing. And there may, there may, you know, not be anything on there that appeals to anybody. But we wanted to put them out there, we needed to have a basis to start with. Let's go back. Nope. Yep. So in the middle two, we start to get into looking at different pieces of public art, knowing that public art will also be important in the town. And that can be everything from, you know, crosswalks across Givens into, you know, if we have some interactive water play in the park, what that might look like. Hanging baskets, getting colorful flowers, some nice light standards throughout the park that are sort of classic in look, little free libraries. The trail systems that we show, we'd like those all to be multi-use, probably paved, so that we can, you know, you can push a stroller, you'll have, be able to bike it, walk it. Looking at some different ways to do sustainable green design for dealing with our stormwater. And the image down there in the lower right, I hinted at the, you know, possibility of putting rocks through the stormwater amenities. So there's an image of that type of treatment. And the image in the lower left is more of a, once again, an interactive water feature that could be put in the park. This is more or less a trough that, it's a, it's a mini lazy river. I mean, you're not getting in it with a water to, an inner tube, but you're, something you can walk through at different levels. This could be, this is a little more urban-looking, but it's same thing could be done with more of a natural look with boulders and rocks and growing materials. And then the image board on the right, we've got some amphitheater images in there, you know, more bringing in, you know, some of the natural elements with rock formations. Looking with the topo, we have the ability to do maybe some hillslides as part of our playground. And crawl-throughs, little cubbies, and that one image on the left. You know, I mentioned an iconic piece of playground equipment, something, some type of a climbing structure, either like the tree climber down there in the lower right, or something with a netting. So a lot of different options that can be, can be done. We put these in just to get people to start thinking about what could be in this park, just things that might make it a little different than your typical community park. So this is what we put in those five, those five pages in that package to get people to vote on, and pull those together, and make comments, and give us a chance then to take forward into the next phases, which is what was on the next slide, was our next steps here. So from, basically, from this time through the end of January, we're working on trying to bring everything together into a, a master plan update. So a consolidated plan for the Horton property, plan update for David Barnes, and a plan for Community Corner. And we will bring those back to another community input session on January 14th. We'll see where we are with pandemic and restrictions. We're hoping we can do it in person in the PD Community Room. And then at the same time, two weeks after that, do a joint work session with the Park Cultural Rec Board to present everything to both bodies at the same time, with the anticipation or, or hope that we can get an approval of an updated site plan and a master plan that evening on January 26th, at your regular board meeting. We will, the intent is to, you know, send out, once again, some concepts before we get there to the board and the committee to react to, before we bring these to the public in January. And then once all of this gets finalized at the end of January, the intent would be to embark on a Part-TF application process from February through May of putting that whole application together. So the applications are due May 3rd, 2021, this next cycle. And our goal is to get those all up there, get that application up there by the end of April. So a lot of work goes into those applications as well, there's a lot of pieces to pull into those. And so the steps we've been going through the last month, every one of those pieces of documentation gets put into this application as well. So and I think my last slide then, which then opens it up to dialogue and, and questions, you can see the happy crew there that went out to walk the site back on October 22nd. We were well represented with engineering planning and a couple of us Benish folks there. We have an online survey that's been, been live for about a week now. And we're gonna have that up through next Monday. So there's a QR code there, as of two hours ago, we had 72 responses to this online survey. So we doubled from where we were Saturday morning when we were out, talking with the public. So that number keeps ramping up, which is good. That survey, you've already seen, about 18 questions. So we've asked different questions on that survey than we are asking through the, the little voting packets on here. So I think with that, I'll open it up to questions to either myself or Dina.
Hi, Commissioner Russell. I have a question about the covered... I have a, um, Commissioner Russell, um, I have a question about the, um, the covered areas that you're, um, do you know what the, um, acoustics are of those? I think it's, um, if we're going to use that as an air, an amphitheater type of thing for our summer concerts, I think that it's important that the, the roofs be pitched in a way that the acoustics are good. And so I think that would be an important factor in determining which one of those structures would, would be best.
Right. And, you know, as we carry forward, as we would carry forward into a more detailed design, um, that's part of that design process is to look at those acoustics. If you remember, I mentioned back at, in October at the board meeting, we do have an architect on our team to do some, just some initial concepts that we would have in January. Worked with that architect on a couple of different amphitheaters. So he's, they're pretty well up on having that acoustical piece in there. We'd probably have an acoustical consultant, uh, when you get into the actual architecture of facilities. You know, both for an amphitheater stage, but also thinking even for the pavilion, if you do something up there so that if you're renting it to multiple groups, you're not crowded, you're not, uh, yelling each, each group out.
Okay. And then, um, so Dana, I don't have the, the master plan in front of me. What, what were the top things that the residents were looking for? Was, was splash pad one of those? I, I know the walking trails, um, um, I was thinking the splash pad and I know a dog park, but I don't know if you could fit a dog park in this, but, um,
I'm looking it up right now.
Okay. Uh, to me, I think it's very important to have some type of water, um, activity there because that, yeah, that's the area that there's no neighborhoods with pools in and things. So I think it's important that the kids in those surrounding neighborhoods have places to come play in the water. So probably if I'm looking at the pictures that, that one, not the one with the rocks, but the one below it with more spray, it seemed to be like it might be more fun. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking something a little bit bigger water feature, but, but I love, I love the natural elements that y'all are showing. Um, I think it's, it's great to have that. And then even in the play structures that you're showing, all the natural things that might be big rocks or fake trees or something like that, um, just to fit with that whole, uh, landscape there, that would be great.
So water feature was a big part of, um, like the community center, the water feature, uh, tennis courts, dog park, uh, covered amphitheater area. Uh, picnic shelter, walking trails was up the highest. And, um, they did have natural play structures, uh, was a big part of it too. Um, and I'm, I'm a fan of getting your hands dirty, getting hit, you know, kids don't get dirty anymore. And they need to have more interactive play in nature. Um, so I'm a big fan of that as well. With the, um, the water feature, I, I think we, it's a good component to put into several places in the park. So that could be at the community corner as well as in the, um, the first phase. Um, trying to figure that out, um, through the natural play is just, we, we just, that's the tricky part about it. We just had to figure that out.
And then just one, um, final thought with the artwork. Uh, one other thing I was thinking is along the walking trails, you could have sculptures or things scattered, um, and also incorporating different, um, like tagging trees and, you know, the names of the trees or having little gardens, like butterfly gardens or pollinator gardens or things like that. So that as they're walking along the trails, they can have that kind of educational element.
Totally agree.
Okay.
I think, you know, we're showing some of that in that scheme to sort of up on top around those stormwater amenities, be able to do some of that pollinator rain garden education and definitely along the, along the trail system to be able to add those in. You know, we can do some fun things with mile markers, uh, something that picks up the character of the town. You know, we haven't talked about, you know, as we look at the character of these structures and furnishings, you've been picking up some of the rail architecture in there. Um, these are, you know, so we have a lot of opportunities to do that. I think that, you know, a true splash pad, if we're, if we're all thinking that, something like that may make more sense up in the David Barnes piece. Just because that's a little more active with the skate park and if we're, with us proposing, you know, some different things on the play equipment down in this park, that could be a swap for one of those areas up there. So, you know, we have a lot of options still on that, but people certainly like splash pads and like to be able to get their kids' hands feet wet.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
I really liked the suggestion of maybe swapping that out because I know splash pads are fun and, and I'd like to see some type of an element, but, um, my only concern is I know Starling's put a whole splash pad in and then they were inundated with people. I know like when my son was doing the, um, summer program, they would take them in a bus and take them all over there. So I would just want to make sure that if we did something like that, we wouldn't be inundated with, you know, preschools or daycares or things like that coming to overwhelm that particular feature. So, I mean, I support, support that, whether it's up at David Barnes, which might make more sense where it's located, but how we would have to do it so we wouldn't become inundated with everyone just showing up and, and things like that.
But we understood that at the beginning about, we want a nice, a nice destination that isn't a big regional destination. So there's a, you know, there's a balance there. You know, I do know that Monroe will be putting in a splash pad at Belktonawanda, probably in, uh, late 2021. So that'll be their second splash pad for the city of Monroe. And, uh, we, you know, there's one in, there, there are more going in around the area. So that's probably helping to, uh, you know, minimize that population a little more as there's more opportunities to get to those locations.
Yeah, I like the, I love the thought of it and it would be fun. I just, how, how can we do it in such a way that it's, it's not like a regional draw, like you said, but they could still run through it and, and still get wet and still enjoy it, but it's, it's just not, you know.
And, and many communities set that up much like they would a, uh, a picnic shelter to rent. So you, you know, you have to reserve certain times for groups. There may be a fee involved. Um, certainly there's a capacity that has to be considered. So, you know, that's how many folks, uh, do that. They just, different times of the day, it's open for the residents of that municipality, municipality. And other times it's, it could be part of a, a shelter rental uh, for a birthday party, or it could be for day, day camp, preschool, that type of thing. So we still have a ways to go to, to determine, you know, what all we want to put in here and, and where it needs to be.
And we also want to keep in mind the budget. I know, don't mean to be Debbie Downer on that, but, uh, want to be careful of that as well. So we can incrementally deliver a usable product, even if we have to stage it.
Correct. Everything we submit in the Part-TF grant application will be, I mean, we will show the full master plans, but we will also be designated what would be phase one, what would be, be chasing after the Part-TF grant for. So, um, and they like to see how, how projects will evolve over time, that there's a thought process behind the future. So we'll be running cost estimates throughout the, throughout the process, we'll have an estimate, you know, at the end of this process as well. You know, primarily looking at, uh, phase one of the project. We'll look at, look at all of them, all phases.
So I just want to add a few comments here. I actually went out on Saturday and was able to participate in the survey and the presentation and it, it was fabulous. It was great to walk through all of that. And, um, on these concept plan, plans that you presented, I was really, had my heart set on number one, but after going through the presentation and getting a better understanding, I love, um, concept plan number two. I think the oval and having that, um, pedestrian parkway around there, and it's not for traffic, um, would be much more usable for the town that we could have vendors set up there, food trucks if we had an event. And then the little shelters that are lining the oval as we could use, um, permanent shade structures like they have down at the skate park, can't leave or show, um, structures or even the swings that you showed. Um, and I can just envision like our citizens sitting on the lawn or having picnics or playing frisbee or having their kids run around, or we could use that for, um, you know, maybe we did a movie night or a picnic in the park. I, I can just envision all that. I love, like Dana, if you're able to scroll down to the next one, next slide. Oh, the other way. I love all these different elements because it's, it, it's not going to be just a run-of-the-mill park. It's going to really, um, go against the national, the natural elements and kind of fit in with nature and tie in. And I think there's so many great things like that on the second page, that those rocks through the water feature, as you can see our kids and even adults too, probably running through there. Or if there's some of the stream beds that they can go in and stop around in and chase for frogs or tadpoles or something like that. I, I think it's great because it's just not the run-of-the-mill. And I love how on the page three halfway down, it has the basketball hoop, but it has the slide in the back that's like ma- built into the natural terrain. So it doesn't look like a typical play structure. It's very natural and it just looks like it belongs there. So I think these are great. And I would love to hear if you're able to tally any of the results from the weekend. I'd love to see what, if there's any sort of theming or if there's anything, or maybe that's a later date.
It keeps, it'll keep evolving. You know, it, it's interesting. We had, um, three skateboarders there Saturday. Well, two skateboarders and one on crutches with his skateboard in the car, but, um, obviously they, you know, their focus was primarily the skate park, which is in, in the other phase, but they also had, you know, wanting to make sure that there were places for, as they called them, the little kids to play as well as the little kids to learn how to skate park or skateboard. You know, they raised comments about being able to have, um, you know, good places to, to gather in small groups, picnicking. They talked about uh, good lighting. They talked about 24-hour camera surveillance, which is there now, but they must not know that, which maybe that's good. So some of their comments, um, as they walked through and looked at the plans, uh, you know, I don't know what ages they were, you know, mid, mid to early, mid to late teens, I suppose.
Yeah.
But they were thinking outside of, even outside the skate park area. So it was good to get that, that younger demographic. Um, we got some opinions from Jeff's kids who were there. So that was good too.
I know I shared the link on social media, so hopefully if there's any citizens or residents watching that they can go to that link, you know, and, and give us their comment or their input because I think that's really important. So hopefully we get more, more, um, traffic on that.
Speaking of, uh, social media, uh, have we, how do, what ways have we used to, uh, put this out to, uh, folks, the, uh, the survey?
So it's on, we've done our, our gamut of social media. So this Instagram, um, what is the other one called? Facebook and Twitter. Um, and then we have it on the website. It's scrolling on the first page, the homepage. Um, we also sent it out, um, to our participants that we've had in the past. I had that flyer that I gave all of y'all when you came up on Saturday. It had like the link, the, um, QR code and then like upcoming events. We've, um, sent it out that way as too, as well. Uh, it, it's just, it's always hard on certain things. It's hard to get, um, public, um, their input until things start progressing a little bit more. And then they, then they see the imagery. Um, and then they're like, oh, I, I don't know if I like this or not. So then we usually get started getting a little more input at the end, um, as well.
Is there any kind of email, uh, database?
So we have from rec desk, we have our, just the people that we've had participating in our program so far. Um, so we've done shout-outs to them. And, um, when we gave the update about the road closing, um, from this past weekend's events, we gave a little shout-out saying to come, you know, come do the survey. But, um, but that's only avenues at this moment in time. Oh, and, and in the paper too, we did it in, um, the tri W.
They were considered, uh, flyers that maybe the, the churches or the schools or something like that.
We can send, we have, um, an email list for the, uh, churches. We can send it out to them.
Well, maybe not an email, but an actual physical flyer.
Yeah, I can do that.
Just on the thought that maybe Tom Mill ends up, not on somebody's inbox, maybe in someone's spam box.
Hey Dana, along that same line, didn't you, I thought when we were down there over the weekend, we had a flyer with the QR code on it. Would, would something like that be sufficient? Did we able to see that, Pedro?
I did. Uh, not everybody has a QR reader though, so, uh, good old fashioned flyer. Uh, whether it be at a, you know, at a church or the supermarkets or, you know, uh, while I'm glad we have the response we have, you know, there's about 19,000 people in town. I'm, I'm hoping for a little more input so that folks aren't complaining that we're not sharing these things. But maybe we can make it a little bit easier for them to, uh, to come in contact with it and respond to it.
Yeah, I agree.
Dana, I was trying to remember, did that flyer also just have the, uh, the link on it as well?
It does.
That somebody could just cut and paste.
Yep. So it has a link on there as well and the QR. Um, and I think it has our webpage as well. So they can go there and link to it also. I'm just writing notes. All right. This is a lot to kind of take in. Does anybody else have any questions or got their imagination juices going? You're ready to get started?
I'm excited. I think you guys did a great job on putting this together and I'm looking forward to seeing what comes next. So, you know, it's, it's exciting and I can't wait to, to start getting this to fruition for our citizens.
And everybody that I've talked to is super excited. They're like, we can't wait for this to, to start. Um, and, um, just the getting us to this point, you know, they're, so they're, you know, they're still holding their breath a little bit, but they're, they're, I was like, we're pushing it. We're re- we're getting ready, ready, go, ready, roll. Any other questions?
I was going to say, as we sort of check off our task box, as we work through the next couple of months, we will, uh, send updates to Dana so she can share with, with you all as well. So when the survey closes out here at the end of the month, we'll get that tabulated when we get the, uh, I think I still have to get these voting packages back from anybody here tonight that has filled it out, plus the, uh, the park board. I have to get those and we'll get those all sort of tabulated and we'll send that information out. And then as we uh, work on some sketches for David Barnes as well as the Community Corner and start to look at maybe some initial architectural concepts, we'll send that out ahead of time too, so that you've all had, had a chance to look at it before, uh, January 14th.
And Mayor, I'd like to mention something too, if I may. So just want to make sure that the board is aware and, you know, John can correct me if I, if I misstate something here, but if, if the board decides that this project is a top priority and wants to move forward, you don't have to wait for the Part-TF process to complete. What I mean is, is when you're applying for a Part-TF grant, you're applying for specific elements, usually the, the pretty stuff, i.e. the, the, the open-air shelter, the greenway trails, the amphitheater, things like that. Parking lots and other infrastructure grading are not part of the application process. So if you decided that you wanted to go ahead and get started with those elements, you would not be putting a, a part of grant application in any type of peril. They do not like you to start work on things that are part of their application, but the other parts of it, as long as you make sure on your plans that you turn into the state, that it is clear that that is not part of the application process, then you can go ahead and move forward with those, those initial site construction to, to get the site ready. And that might be something that, that I would, if, if this becomes a priority of the board, that I would encourage us to do.
Thanks Jeff. I, I would, I would also agree with that thought process that we need to get this rolling. There, there are a lot of things that we can do before anything starts. Picking up all the debris on the ground, cleaning up the grounds itself, limbing trees, walking that and make sure that we can keep all those, yet still have that canopy and that protection. So I think it's a great idea to start to move forward on the things that won't interfere with future work. So it's time.
Yeah, I would just, I guess in backing you up there, Jeff, you know, it's going to take a few months to get a detailed design where you would get to a set of bid documents for contractors completed anyway. And then you'll have a certain amount of time for permitting and bidding. So, you know, all that stuff can be taking place while Partef is rolling through this process. There is an option, even in the grant application, that you can be reimbursed for a certain number of that fee parse as well. That's retroactive. So, you know, that's another little piece in there. And then as Jeff mentioned, if there's some of the infrastructure that you just pull out separately and do as a separate contract as the town, then that's certainly stuff that can be started. But, you know, in a, in a wooded site like this, as you mentioned, Mayor, you know, there's going to, you know, we need, we need to have somebody go back out, reassess the trees that are there, look at those trees that were put on that tree survey five years ago. You know, some of those have unfortunately died and probably need to be removed. There may be some that makes sense to save as habitat trees for part of the environmental education. But that's certainly something that can be done ahead of time. We're, we're doing the same thing at a park in Charlotte here, where they're going to have to remove most of the tree canopy, unfortunately, because of ash borer. They have a lot of ash trees and they're trying to make sure that gets done before they come in and actually do the park reconstruction. So there, there are many options to do this and speed this process up.
Well, once we have a good concept in place and have good cost estimates and this starts to come to more fruition over the next few months, I think we'll have a, a better idea of how we, we can do indeed just that, what options we do have to go ahead and start moving forward. If, if that's what we do.
I'm excited to make this go forward. This is really a start of something that's been in the works for so long. And we need to perform on it. So kudos to everybody on, John, thank you for, and your partner coming out there. Saturday was fun to see some of the people out there. I did see those skateboarders and I did see the guy on the crutches. You know, he's been an active participant in the skateboard park, I'm sure. So that was good to see out there. And there were actually quite a few people, at least when I was there, showing up, giving their input, showing some interest. So that was, that was good to see. Unless there's any more comments, Dina?
Alright, so our next step is we're gathering all this information right now. And then like John said, we'll give some out some information about the survey results. And then as we get closer to December, we'll have some more concept plans for y'all to look at and give comments to. And then we'll come back in January and get some more information for you. And then wow you at the end of January and hopefully for a heads up that we're ready to go. And we'll go for the next step. I know that the citizens are super excited, like I said earlier, and they can't wait for this park to happen. So, and I, I love building things. I ain't gonna lie to you. I love building things. And just to be able to be a part of this for our citizens is just awesome. So I'm, I'm glad I'm part of the team to make this happen.
Well, thanks for all the effort, Dina, and a lot of coordination, a lot of effort. Thanks to you and the team and all the public works guys that were out there facilitating on Saturday. Everybody's pulling their weight in this and it really is very nice to see this unity. So thank you everyone for that. One quick question before we depart, John or Dina, do we have any timeframes, expected timeframes for delivery of some of the results? Both in person and online?
I, I hope to get those to you probably in the, maybe not the first week, but the second week in December. So the survey, the online survey closes out November 30th. So we'll start pulling that together on November 30th, is next Monday. So we'll start pulling that together next week. And then once I collect the outstanding voting packets from Dina, we'll put the rest of that piece together. I've tabulated the 12 or 14 that we picked up on Saturday. So we put that together. Concept two right now, as a general concept is, is in the lead. But there were still a lot of good comments that came out on that.
Awesome. And again, thanks, John, for all your efforts out there. I know you're walking around from tent to tent, talking to people. So certainly well received. It's nice to have the, we'll call it active participants in the game. So thank you very much for that.
Well, you know, while we may not have had as many people as we had hoped, we certainly had some great conversations and longer conversations with the folks that were there. So it's spaced out well. Kirsten and Kevin, who were there with me, you know, had some good conversations with folks. So it's, it's good to hear, hear them speak their mind. So thank you all.
Well, we're looking forward to the, the start. And as the town manager said, we'd like to see if we can move some things around to get some of that groundwork underway to, it gives you a better sense of what we actually have to work with when you get all that stuff off the ground. So maybe that's one of the first things we start looking at, Jeff. So, you know, start thinking about that again. I think it's a great idea to move it forward. So again, thank you, everybody. Any other comments on this particular one before we would move on? I don't see any hands. Oh, Tracy, I see a hand up. Is that you? Do I see a hand back in there? You know, there's one on your screen.
I see that too. That's funny.
There's a hand on my screen?
Yeah, don't let it hit you.
I don't see anything. This is weird.
Oh my, who did that?
Thank you.
Hit the button that said raise my hand. Is that?
Maybe so. Did you hit the raise my hand button on the bottom of the screen?
I don't even see a raise my hand button on the bottom of my screen. So.
Everybody else see that on her screen? Nobody sees it? Wow, I'm seeing things. I love it.
I see it.
Yeah, we see it on this screen. Awesome. All right. With that, thank you all, John and, and Dina. Thank you for this. We look forward to having, you know, more updated information. So with that, we're going to move on to the next spot.
Good. Thank you all.
All right. The next spot is Matt. You're up to bat again. This is about the information on NCDOT project 5748, which is the rail spur construction project. So Matt, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Matt. Welcome, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity. This is just an information session to, to get everybody up to speed on the project. There are no decisions to be, to be made tonight. But it is an important project. It's going to have a big impact for the town. And I want to make sure that everybody, one, is, is aware of, of where we are right now and, and what, what concerns we may have are, are well, are well discussed at this point as we move forward. I think I'll go ahead and share the, the project site with everyone. So if you go to, can everybody see the, the website? Okay. If you go to ncdot-publicinput.com, the Helms Road grade separation is prominently at the, at the top of that page. And so this is the, the basic understanding of the scope of the project. Again, it is, it is a rail project, which is a little, not traditional for, for typical projects we see in town. We're, we're used to NCDOT's highways process. This one's a little bit different in that the rail division is doing this on behalf of CSX so that they can get a siding constructed that will allow them to, to park trains off the main line on a, on a spur so that they can have maintenance or, or typical rest provided to their, their workers and, and not interrupt town activities. And, and as you know, we have had oftentimes where trains have parked and, and at our at-grade crossings have been, have been cut off. And that, that has presented, you know, a problem, not just in, in getting around town, but in emergency response. And so they've been very diligent to ensure that that doesn't happen again. Specifically, I think phase one of this project is, is to connect Tory Path and the residents that live there with Helms Road. And so that they have a means of, of getting into town or emergency getting to them when a train may be parked before the grade separated crossing is constructed. And, and that's phase one. And that's been, that's at design now. But ultimately what they want to have happen is, is those at-grade crossings for both Tory Path and Helms Road be eliminated in favor of a grade separated crossing, which in this case is going to be a bridge across the tracks and to connect 75 to Waxall Marvin Road. So that's, they've got funding from the, the federal level to facilitate that design and construction. And they're moving at quite a pace with their environmental document right now to, to keep, keep schedule. Regardless of what all the other DOT projects that have been installed, this one has been able to move forward because it's a different pot of funding. So again, if we look at the overview, it's, it's to construct a grade separation, to close the existing at-grade crossing and then finally build the, the siding that will allow them, CSX, to improve their operations. So there's the general area of where they studied. And, and this area is somewhat misleading because it's the area that they studied for the purposes of the environmental document. It is not the area where the project itself is fully going to be funded and constructed. And those have been comments we've, we've made back to, to the rail division to be sure that everybody understands clearly what the expectation should be. So if we zoom in a little further, this is what the area that was studied to, to take in all the impacts. But it's not necessarily deciding where the, the ultimate construction of roads are going to occur. So the schedule is here and I'll come back to that because I think it, I want to get a little bit more into the, the, the details of the, of the alignment before we talk about the, the schedule itself. So these are the alternatives that they had us choose from. And they, they put in a variety of options because there were some, some basic high level, I think, decisions that, that they needed to make and that impacted the overall functionality and how it works with the town's network. So there are really, they call them alternatives one and two, and then they have their own options. What they basically, alternative one is having the, this, the crossing further to the west of town. And alternative two is having it closer to, to town. And, and then it creates its own intersections with Waxall Marvin Road. And that's where the other alternatives within those main one and two options come into play. So option A is this red alignment and it has a larger footprint of, of more, more in line with what you traditionally see of, of a grade separated crossing a bridge. And then they differ in how phase one, the at-grade connection from, from Tory Path to Helms Road will occur on the other side of the tracks. And ultimately they, they all have options one, A, B, and C all have kind of differing configurations around the businesses and their connection to Waxall Marvin Road. And they subtly change. And that's why they're different. But ultimately they are part of the same overall theme, which is to connect further out west and more in line with Helms Road proper and how it can, it, it connects to Waxall Marvin Road. The second options all really favor a, a, a smaller loop and connection across the tracks and to Waxall Marvin Road. And they do that more or closer to, to downtown than, than alternative one. And some of their reasoning for doing this is they also took into account what the, the owners of the properties were doing and telling them at the time might be better land use planning with, with what private development is going to do. And so that, that was helpful at the time, but as they got further along in the environmental document process, some of those things don't come into account as much as, as the other impacts of their study area. And, and that's what will lead them to their ultimate decision. And so they can't make their decisions wholly taking into account what private development might do as much as what is the current environmental aspect in terms of stream crossings, impacts to endangered species and, and current residential and commercial construction impacts. Those are the higher level value, even though we might have better information from what other people want to do with that property, that doesn't come into play at this part of the, of the design review or the environmental review. And so when you go down, specifically they have much more detailed maps. We'll try and get to those. In that have a better design scope and I'm see how I can get out of this.
Matt, just a comment along the way. So if I remember right, the, their preferred one was the one that was on the westernmost portion of their study area. And the funded area is basically below Waxall Marvin, if I remember right.
Right. And so I wanted to, because those other maps are much better detailed, I want to go back to those and see how I can best do that. Let's go. I'm going to create a new window. Did not practice how to get out of that screen. I apologize for that. So let's do this. There we go. Sorry. Okay. So are we back to the original site? So then we go, these will allow us to go more in depth. Go more in depth. Okay, so this is our alternative one A. And this is. Really what the town has proposed as the our preferred alternative. Because what it does on the south part of town is it. Provides a an ideal connector to what we expect will be our southern bypass in the in the long range future. It also connects Tory Path to Helms Road in a way that. Pedestrians and bicycles and the cars for that matter are 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 much more aesthetically pleasing. The other alternative is to go. Between the business and the tracks and connect around the backside, which which I didn't believe was going to be favorable. And then the roundabout is more in line with with the helm, the current intersection. And and so when we talk about this complete completing the connection to the existing Parkway West. It avoids the the existing residence where Joyce Blithe is. And and this is overall, given all the other alternatives. I think the least impactful and and the best in line with what the town wants to see going forward. What's been a difficult issue at this point is is their environmental survey identified. Two cemeteries on site north of Waxall Marvin Road. And their preferred alternative is alternative C, which avoids those cemeteries for. That's really have when they compare the impacts, the cemetery takes precedent over the residents. And and we're not positive right now that that's. An actual viable cemetery. There's confusion in that matter. And in a previous meeting, they said they were going to have to do ground penetrating radar and kind of find out. What's there first before they go ahead and move forward with the design and and. Right now, they're not saying that they're going to do that. And that's been a a comment that we've put forward that we we certainly want to. Validate. Why we're. You know, choosing to go in that direction if 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 we're not positive, it's really a cemetery. But that gets into again to the confusion of of funding. They're showing these designs that go all the way or complete a connection out to. Either the Parkway or the sixteen itself. And what they're really funded for is only to cross the tracks and get to Waxall Marvin Road. And and so I want to be clear that that expectation is 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 understood both by the public and. And by administration and the board. That what's happening north of Waxall Marvin Road, they are not. Really participating in whatsoever. It will be up to the town or NC DOT Highway Division. To make any improvements that that occur above Waxall Marvin Road. So they're going to build a great separation. And a roundabout and and that's where their their scope ends.
They're just just for clarification again, all of their work and all their approvals and design on their preferred. Location is all at aligning towards. Helm's there and everything below Waxall Marvin. The cemetery confusion thing seems to be from a comment. Maybe even a joking comment from the landowner there about what's there. As we understand it from her conversations with the consultant, it's it's a pet cemetery. And not subject to any guidance on alignment. And so again, DOT rail can proceed with their project because it is all south of that. It would be up to us and the landowner to make sure it's understood that if in fact those. Labeled cemeteries are in fact pet cemeteries, then the alignment north. Of Waxall Marvin can be other than what. You know, talking about going through Joyce's house, which I know again. As I said the other night in my town hall, not everything on Facebook is the truth. And so. You know, everybody gets steered up over something that isn't. And so we want to make sure that everybody understands. That again, the DOT project is below Waxall Marvin. It really has nothing to do specifically with Joyce's property as it exists today.
Right, right. And but it but it will impact what they what they decide will impact how. Easy we are able to go forward with. What we know has to happen. We know we have to connect either to the Parkway West or get to sixteen somehow. We know the widening is going to come down and stop at the Parkway. In in the later part of this decade. And and if we don't have a means to to make a connection from. The 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 good work they're doing of of crossing seventy five and the train tracks for us. Then this really doesn't do much to improve our network. And and that's what I I've been trying to tell DOT Highway for some time is. If we know this is going to happen, it's funded and it's got a set schedule. How can we do the the necessary planning and and take the necessary steps? To to reach a a better timeline with the improvement of of completing those this western loop. Otherwise, all we're really doing is we're getting across the tracks easier, but we're moving the traffic, you know, to to Waxall Marvin Road. And then it it doesn't really have a a great alternative, but to go either further back into downtown or or going back up Waxall Marvin Road itself, which. You can already do.
The good thing about their, one of their latest decisions is to put a roundabout there at Waxall Marvin. So we have some great flexibility. If we need it, we have some great flexibility on how we enter that roundabout. From almost any given position north of the Parkway. So it doesn't have to have a straight in alignment. It could be like the one. At Potter and seventy five, they can come in at different angles. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. So. You know, looking forward in my conversations with DOT as well. They are seem to be leaning towards once they confirm a couple of reports and some studies and. Maybe some misconceptions that they're leaning more towards the western alignment there along Helm's.
That yeah, that is the understanding. And so we'll look at maybe some of the other ones alignment. See which one was their locally preferred agency option. So this is in line with what what they had told us they were leaning towards. A sharper turn south of seventy five. And then. And a roundabout that's that's further east of of Helm's Road. That again, for for their understanding, it avoids the cemetery impacts in the in the future build. And to to the mayor's point, roundabouts, the great thing about them is they they don't traditional intersections, you want to line up as ninety degrees as possible. So that you have safe approaches and it's and it's safe to cross the intersection. A roundabout gives you the ability to kind of. Manipulate where these approaches all join in and what angles they come in at can be kind of managed. As the site conditions warrant. To give you more flexibility in those connections. And and so that is certainly a valid point and it's in our favor. Across the board over over a a traditional signalized intersection again, and they're much safer. Then it's ideally. You know, subjectively aesthetically more pleasing as well. But this is, this was what they had indicated was their previous. Preferred alternative. They they did open up a public information session and they've now closed that. And so they are planning to. Once they close it. Complete their environmental document, which is is a is a very time consuming and. The decisions that they make are constrained by the federal requirements. Once they con- conclude that document and and show that they've met the letter of the law, then they'll be able to move into the actual. Process of designing the the alternative that they've selected at the end of that document. And really be able to talk nuts and bolts about how the functionality and and the the right of way that will be needed. That that's where the rubber really meets the road and why they've. Kind of moved briskly through this point to not get not drag out the environmental process.
Matt, I have a quick comment as well to your point earlier stated about the. Longer range vision, the future connection south of seventy five there to what we would affectionately call the. Southern route for the Waxall Parkway. I think it's great to have them work towards us on that goal. To try to have a continuum south and around town. Again, this is, you know, maybe a longer range plan, but. It's what we didn't do real well before and I commend you for working with them to to kind of help them with that alignment.
Yeah, I think that's one thing that the the mistakes that that get us here, I think in in my mind, we should be a lot further along with. With the planning of the Parkway both east and west than we currently are. And and one of the things that really hampers the western Parkway is the fact that. What's currently built is not built to a proper standard. So everybody's calling it the Parkway, but it really can't serve as the Parkway because the angles. That it meets. Providence Road is is a dangerous angle. It's a very sharp angle. And both geometrically in the in the horizontal and the and the vertical, these curves. Do not allow you to go at at the design speed that you would want a major or minor thoroughfare to operate at. Say forty five miles an hour. You have to go twenty five mile an hour along that road just by the geometry was built at and to change that would mean. Buying more houses, re- rebuilding that that section of road. And so. A a disservice has been done right out of the gate when contemplating what the western loop should be. And that's really hampered our ability to make any progress because DOT one won't accept the Parkway as it is right now. And two, getting funding for a a roadway that doesn't meet standard. It it's not subject to federal funds. So it becomes if that's the the means we really want the Parkway to serve. We're going to have to do it, find other means. And and that's what's really made it difficult to make a lot of progress. I was hopeful that this, having this piece of the puzzle laid out before us would would kind of light a fire under. Under the highway division and say, hey, this is a great opportunity to to. Make this final connection because they. They know sixteen and seventy five is a bottleneck and they don't have a solution for it because. It involves the his, the the constraints of the historic downtown, the train and everything else that's going on there. So this is a. An obvious relief valve for that, but they still don't have a means to to help. Help themselves in that matter. And I'm continuing to try and help everybody help us. Because in the long run, we're the ones that have to live with this. And and as as quickly as I can create an improvement to to the network. The the better off everyone's going to be in in the long run. But that's been a a difficult. Discussion and conversations. Everybody can agree it's a great idea, but no one can can agree. How to fund it and and how to how to bring it to fruition. And that's that's. Something that we'll we'll, we're not going to give up what I'll be here every day until it's done. And and that's kind of what I said in the comments is is. We can all be constrained by the how they have to operate. But a good idea like this, we we should really be looking outside the box sometimes. To to see what what really needs to happen at whatever level to to make this make this work. And so far, we've got a lot of good intentions, but not a lot of progress in my mind. On this front.
Jeff, do you have some comments relative to some of the conversations we've had with DOT? We recognize certainly that there's that. Segment of what we now know as Waxall Parkway does not meet their speed standards that never would, never had. But again, looking to this positively as a bleeder to relieve some of the traffic because not a great percentage. Of the traffic goes to the west. It generally goes to the east. So at least in some of my conversations with DOT leadership. They recognize that we would have to probably take some of that roadway. We'd like to maybe have them take it. From south of the point of connection, but we would still own the connector from there. Nor- north and east.
So driving at twenty five miles per hour is better than driving at zero. So I mean, in my mind, even though we may not be able to. Get that road graduated up, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it, up to DOT standard. If we can get that segment of road into Waxall Marvin Road, it will allow. Some people to be able to go avoid NC sixteen and NC seventy five intersection, you know, even if it's five percent. Ten percent, whatever that number is to help alleviate that issue. I think that would be a good thing. The bigger fix is obviously getting the Parkway east. From sixteen down to seventy five, but that's a whole another. Another animal to tackle. The lowest hanging fruit is that western section and it it's becoming. More and more clear that we're going to have to try to figure out a way to to either get it done. Completely ourselves between Waxall Marvin Road and that dead end of. Of Waxall Parkway or, you know, maybe some type of of public private partnership might present itself, but we can't necessarily. Assume that will. Will happen. But you know, that. To me is 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 really imperative. It's a critical section to like to get done. We're looking at it now. We're going to start doing some some modeling. I know Matt's been talking to Kimberly Horn about seeing. We complete that, how that will. Look at the intersection of seventy five and sixteen. So that'll be another critical piece of information that we need. I mean, I think if we alleviate that even a little bit, I think we'll have done a a great thing and and, you know, future planning too. You you add that section there at the end of the Parkway and then something that could that can help. Through the Howie parcel that that not only serves whatever future development is there, but also provides another cut through, I think would be a. Would be a a good thing. So it's it's just providing people options. You know, there's just not many options. Right now, so we have to to move to to provide as many options for people as we can, you know, really it. Kind of the basic level, it goes back to connectivity, you know, what we're trying to do. At a more local street level with our connectivity ordinance, you know, trying to do it at a little bit higher level here with these hierarchy of roads.
Yeah. And so to to the mayor's point, when we talk about the east section. Ideally, that's what solves the the problems of your left turns at sixteen and seventy five, right? If you can come out here and get on without going down. And make your left that that is a predominant movement that that would really improve. The problem for us is, one, it's it's such a distance, the cost of it. We couldn't begin to take it down locally. We only have jurisdiction out to Waxall Indian Trail Road. Out after that, it occurs out in the county and and through Mineral Springs as well. So we couldn't. Have total control over project, even if we wanted to take it down. If if we got it completed to Waxall Indian Trail Road, it stops and then you just feed right back into downtown and you haven't really. Resolved anything. So that's again, a bigger project and it's in, it's it's proposed on the the state's transportation improvement plan, which goes out to. You know, twenty forty five now, and then they're working on twenty fifty, but it's so far off. In in getting that kind of funding that it won't be done in time for the sixteen widening to to come in and and relieve. That improvement as well. I think this is. On the western side, we have more of an ability to control our own destiny because it is in town limits. It's a much smaller sec- segment. And it it could potentially be designed and built in line with the current schedule. Of of the sixteen widening, which is twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty somewhere in there. And the grade separated crossing, which they're saying. Would begin construction in twenty twenty three and be maybe finished by twenty twenty five or so. And that's a very ambitious schedule, but so far they've been they've been hitting their marks much. More reliably than than we typically see DOT do in the highway side because of their funding issues that they've had. Of late. So that's where we stand right now. I think there's there's still a lot of. Information still to be determined and provided for us to. information still to be determined and provided for us to 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 really feel confident about. Right now, they they just want to finish the environmental process so that they can begin working in earnest on the the specifics. And at that point, I think we'll be in a better position to to be able to respond in in kind. I think one thing in addition to the comments about the cemetery, sort of verifying that and and all and being clear about the scope with everyone, that they're not building it all the way to sixteen, even though it looks that way on or on paper. They have not proposing in either phase one or phase two to put in sidewalk or bicycle facilities on a all brand new segment of road, which is in conflict in my mind with their own complete streets policy. And and so I've made that point early and often. Their their initial response is that, well, the town can add that later if it so desires at its at its own cost. And and that's really not in meeting with with the the understanding that Complete Street says these transportation is not just cars. It's 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 walking and it's biking. And there is a a need for that. And and the the cost now is only going to be, is going to be cheapest at the design and construction phase. It's never going to get as cheap as it is right now. And and so they've kind of let themselves off the off the hook in a way. And and I'm not satisfied that that's a reasonable expectation. If the town has to build it, then it just goes on the list of things at the bottom of everywhere else. We need to add sidewalk and bike facilities that we don't currently have them. So to to plan a new facility and not plan for the e- e- even the right of way is is in my mind not serving our interests at all. And and I've I've made that known in the in the comments as well. And that's that's what I want you to be aware of as we move forward. That all these things, they they haven't necessarily addressed them, but they are on the record. And so I would expect at the next round, when they come back, to see some movement or expect that that there will be further pushback from from my office.
Okay, great. Matt, lots of work. That's a lot of effort there. And at least, again, we're we're moving forward on little pieces at a time, and it's like that elephant, one bite at a time. So we'll try to solve every time out. We're running a little bit over. If there's some questions that anybody has for Matt, raise your hand. And Tracy, we did figure out what that hand was, but I'll have to tell you that later. So any comments, any questions from anybody on the screen? Seeing none. Matt, thanks again for doing all the things you do for us. It is tedious, intense, and a lot of work. So thank you for that. Keep us posted on that. If we can help at any level, you know we will. So please ask. All right, we're down to the favorite part, adjournment. So we'll do it by a motion, by acclamation, all in favor to adjourn? Say aye.
Mayor, we need to roll call. Roll call.
Need to do roll call on the way out on that? Okay, so roll call vote. Do I have a motion then to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Simpson makes a motion. Okay, we'll go roll call. Mayor Potem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Aye.
Mr. Morey?
Aye.
Back to Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Great. We're out of here. We'll see you in a few more minutes on the next meeting. Thanks, everyone.